Any comments before we get going here, Mr.?
No.
Comments on the articles, Mr.?
Just say, "Well..."
That's why we were hesitant to have a meeting, as you see, if they're new to twenty-two articles. Anybody have any comments on the articles? Just quick, folks.
Chairman, are we going through each one or do we know it?
Yep.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Rach.
I just want to make sure that we can't raise inappropriate grant points here.
Well, we can't, the money can't be expended until July first.
Right.
So, the two that, the highway is a school department. Technically, it was approved to raise inappropriate, no, of course FY twenty, would the funds would not be available until July first, which I don't really think would impact the school, because I don't think they're going to do the jobs in the summer anyways, but it would have an impact on that. Keep in mind, everybody, we have certified, by name, Mr. Chairman, four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in free cash. This is a pretty hefty special town meeting with a lot of requests. My full intention is to decline probably twenty-five percent of these requests that came in late. It's crazy. My other question is, has finance actually voted on any of these or has a recommendation added to them?
How could we vote on something we don't have?
And these articles were available how long ago?
Well, we just added two more, too.
We added, but we had a bunch of articles for a while.
Well, we had on the agenda for Tuesday the eighteenth.
I'm saying, we had knowledge of these articles, I mean Capitals have plenty of knowledge of Tom's.
That's the only, of all what's on here, twenty-two articles is about more than we've ever discussed with anyone.
So...
You know, it is where it is, Barry, I mean, I don't, everybody knows this is why we were, we were trying to avoid the special town meeting, because all of this is an opportunity to expend cash. I mean, you can see what we're going to do. We're going to expend a ton of money where we just filled everybody's coffers.
Our intent is to try to meet next week before the special, to go over these, but we weren't going to, we're not going to say anything about this until then.
So, we have to have this posted fourteen days prior, which is January third. So, our intent is to have this warrant posted within the next few days, because Clerk is on vacation, I believe, right? So, we're on a timeline. So, after today, tomorrow is pretty much it, right?
Well, I got it on the agenda, you can read it.
So, what we decide today is, is pretty much going to be going forward to the Clerk, and it's going to have to get posted, because we're out of time.
Go ahead.
So, you have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ann.
I was always under the assumption, I guess, that a special town meeting was to clean up bills that were due in for necessities.
Generally, it is.
Am I thinking the wrong way?
No, but you're thinking a few years late. That's what it used to be, and for some reason, for whatever reason, over the last ten years or so, this is what it's turned into.
But this is what, it's been coming up every year, the same, the same thing.
It's come into our second town meeting, which is why we have one in May to fill everybody's coffers. They work on it for six months, trying to figure out what money they need the last of the year. This is why we are very reluctant. When we first started this conversation, Ann, you have to remember that there was two articles.
Yes.
One, the mold, and then to get Tom's access to the money that's already been approved. And you see, we've gone from two to twenty-two. I don't have an explanation, I don't have any answer, it is what it is. So, as Barry says, you know, he likes the luxury of time to go over, and anything in detail, well, he doesn't have that this year. So, whether they meet next week, they're going to have to decide on the floor whether they're going to support it or not. I don't think you're going to have enough time to have that discussion, obviously. That, that'll be up to, you know, to either throw your support or your opposition against whatever it is.
Which it normally is, anyway.
Basically. You can have all the discussions in the world, but it comes down to the meeting. Well, if you, everybody wants to go through real quick, one, ninety-nine thousand capital stabilization. We all know the intent of capital planning is to avoid some of these things in the future and start planning a little bit. I know, Adam, you are still on track for your replacements in next year.
That's correct, yes. Fire department's here.
But that's, you know, one of the purposes of capital planning, so next year, Adam does not have to go on the floor and ask for a hundred thousand dollars. He's going to have ninety-nine thousand dollars sitting there, which is the whole purpose of capital planning.
But we still have an article for that.
Yes.
Right?
Defenders, defenders.
So, we're funding his turnout here, I think this is year three?
Yeah.
Correct? Which is thirty-seven thousand. Capital Stabilization currently has about a hundred thousand in it. The article that was presented last year was to put a minimum of fifty thousand or twenty percent of our certified free cash towards Capital Stabilization, so that we were saving for these things, like, and I will give Adam credit, he's probably one of the only departments that actually has qualified your plan and projects far enough out so that capital can plan things in advance and save and expend those funds appropriately and not have to have an article for a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a highway loader. And I want to remind everybody, we wouldn't be here tonight for that highway loader if the mower issue didn't happen last year, because that was on track to be replaced, and Tom had to have that mower. And then this loader went crap out, and now we're forced to do this. So, if you stay on track with capital and things that you want to purchase, I know things come up, but we can expend the money from Capital Stabilization without having to have this large sum of money that we've got to try and figure out how we're going to do this and potentially impact the tax rate of FY twenty.
So, back to my question was, in the last two years, we put articles on the floor to support the stabilization for the fire department. Will we need to do that this year for the third installment of that stabilization?
Yes, we have to, we have to get approval on the town floor to transfer the last amount of money from Capital Stabilization.
Will I need to?
So, the first year was to establish a capital stabilization, then we transferred money last year. We set up Adam's two years ago along with that, so this is completely separate, but it does need to be voted on to be transferred out last month.
It works.
Should work, if we do it that way. So, that ninety-nine thousand represents twenty thousand, excuse me, twenty percent of our certified free cash.
Start with your chair. No, and, you know, I just think it's worth remembering that, you know, one of the comments you had a couple meetings ago is, what we vote for in May, we pay for. This is exactly why we're in this position now. All right, two, hundred thousand dollars Town Hall maintenance.
So, by name, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So, we're trying to replenish the article that we've had running where we've been using money, funds from there to do repairs and all, keep it going. This was, we did not receive the grant for the windows, we're trying to get the windows done on the first floor and possibly the second floor. In my opinion, I think I strongly support doing this project, because we're in no position to move the police department out of that building at this point in time. Ventilation is a huge issue there. The building has come a long way in the last few years with a lot of different people involved with this building. It's much drier in here, but I do think the windows is, is a, something that is really needed at this point in time, not only for the building, but for the police department on the first floor. If we don't, and something happens, and the Board of Health goes in and steps in and says, you know, you can't be in there, or whatever ends up happening, we have no word with the police. So, you rent a trailer, or you rent three trailers at about three hundred thousand a year to put them in a trailer, because they can't be in the building. I just think we seriously need to continue to put some money into that article, so that we keep fixing the building and maintaining and getting it up to the levels it needs to be. And on another note, we should have notification of ADA grant shortly, I don't know if they'll hold a year, but it is, that notification is coming shortly, so... Not that it's a priority, folks, and I know the Friends of the Town Hall has spoken about actually putting some money towards it. Also, if this article was to pass, donating, you know, some of the money that they've raised, but I, I take a portion of it. I mean, a quote that we have is about a hundred thousand dollars to do the windows on the first and then some of the second, so...
What about the forty that we already voted?
We've been exhausted, or expended some of that money, some of the repairs have been done. That money went into the article.
Specifically for windows.
Well, we went out to bid, we had engineering studies, we drew some from that, there is some money there, about forty thousand. I would say maybe, don't quote me on this, over thirty, but we've used some of the money, that would be included.
Did Tom see what it would cost to put a new engine in the loader?
Yes.
What's the answer?
As far as I know, yes, he did, Mr. Collier.
Okay, I was just saying, it costs thirty-five thousand, then he's got two loaders when he buys a new loader, I don't know.
He's not going to, there's no money going to be expended into the loader that we're replacing.
So, can I ask one more question about what we're talking about? So, when the motion is raised, where is that money going to come from?
Well, prior to, my recommendation was free cash, but seeing everything else, it's all kind of gone out, so we get through what we have here. So, it may not, it may have to wait till May to be raising appropriate, I don't know. And I want to see what the board thinks, my opinion, and what the board's opinion is, is that what we're actually going to put on and what we can afford to do. We need to leave a hundred fifty thousand dollars of free cash going into May special, for snow and ice and whatnot, so we don't want to dip below that. So, that leaves us about three hundred thirty thousand of the free cash we could have spent. That's a high amount of money to be expended at a special town meeting, but we're good. We had a great free cash here, folks, but, you know, if that money gets certified, everybody's eyes light up, and it's like, spent, spent, spent. You know, short-term debt, we're going to put some money towards that, and the Treasurer's not here this evening, we don't know if we're going to need to borrow for some of these things. So, I wish he was here, but it may be a borrow, and some of the others, I don't know. But I think it, just identifying if we're going to put the article on and try to figure out how we're going to fund it after is probably where we're at right now. I mean, we can make a mention about it, but we don't have to, we don't have to. I mean, are we going to put them out or not? We're going to pass over, and it doesn't really make sense.
Nope, you don't.
As much as I'd hate to do it, I would say that article would probably have to come off based on everything else that's come in for now, so May.
Okay, three and four, those are, got to do the regionalization of the Dog Pound. It started out, as most things do, you know, with the good intentions to get three or four towns in to alleviate the situation in the four surrounding towns. The state was in great support of it, because it does fall into their regionalization plan. Unfortunately, like a lot of things in municipal government, the costs have increased substantially than what we thought in the beginning, but this is our, our share of Warren's responsibility for the Animal Control Center, which is part of the state's regionalization plan. So, Article three and four are putting money aside for our fair share when that project's, is it starting in the spring? Beck?
Probably summer.
Summer.
So, it's my understanding, Beck, if I'm correct, and if I'm wrong, we have to commit our portion, Warren's portion, to the regional shelter.
To move forward for the next portion of the grant.
So, we, we need to be in with this project to get this building built. The twenty-three thousand is a transfer from an account that was set up before, for animal control. We can use those funds plus the eighty-four thousand, our portion's about a hundred thousand. It is far less than what we would be expending if we were going to build a, put up next to the highway department and man our own regional, or our own animal control building. But, you know, you're probably talking three, four hundred thousand dollars. So, this is to build a new property, which I think they're looking around Burley Park area.
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
No, in Munson.
In Munson?
Yep.
In Munson, so, location's still to be determined, but it's for the building itself, but Warren has to commit, or we won't be a part of it. So, that's kind of a priority.
About eight hundred thousand, the project.
The project itself, like Beck said, eight hundred thousand.
And how many towns are, what are?
Palmer, Munson, New York for us. So, my, my, my idea, guys, with the eighty-four was free cash, the other one was a transfer from the article.
And the twenty-three, is that the annual percentage that we need to save? Or is this, is this included in the building of the facility?
This is the building, this is all building.
Facility, all right.
One-time class, we decide to do annual.
Okay, five. Mr. LaVoy is asking, which we had, had discussions here, that once the department ended up getting rid of any of their surplus equipment, that that money returned to that department. Adam has asking for three thousand two hundred dollars to be returned to him from his sale of the articles.
The auction.
Auction equipment.
This is mainly brush truck and, yeah. So, part of the agreement with the auction was that Highway and Fire would receive funds from the auction of the equipment that was sold this past year. So, that would be coming out of free cash.
And that's the same thing for Article six, Mr. Nardi.
Yeah, one question I have on Article six. Do we want to use some of that fourteen-nine to put towards the loader? In my opinion, this is, is that this is necessity of equipment, I mean, I, I, not that I don't want to give Highway that amount of money to go ahead and buy other equipment, but why not use this fifteen thousand dollars and put it towards the one forty-two, whatever it's going to end up being, and lessen it, lessen it down to about a hundred twenty plus? My recommendation would be to take that fourteen-nine and use it towards the purchase of the loader, whatever we decide to do with the loader.
I don't have an issue with that, Dario, I mean, this is basically found money.
It is.
Now, it's great that they, to be able to do the math, because that's the people that do the work, but...
But he needs the money. And this is money, and he needs the loader, so it's going right back to the piece of equipment.
Money, money is money, so I, I would have no problem whatsoever.
I was saying, we should use that money for now.
I'd say we apply it to whatever.
It's either give him fifteen grand in petty cash, or give him fifteen thousand dollars towards it.
I mean, typically, I have a little disagreement with how we spread that money around. I mean, it is town's money to begin with, it should go back to the town unless we have legal purpose of it. I mean, Adam's three thousand plus is no big deal, but when you're talking ten K and above, I mean, that's, that's a big chunk of change, and we have a budgeting process that should be occurring for any expenditures we need. So, I would say, I mean, that's my only problem, that is, is it is town's money, town appropriated money to buy equipment to begin with, right? Just because the equipment no longer has any useful life, doesn't mean the money should automatically go back to the department. I think that if we appropriate the money and use it for the loader, I think it's a good idea.
So, is that comment directed towards the Highway Department or the Fire Department?
All departments, really, I mean...
Because we, we did agree in a select meeting and a think committee to allow Tom to repurpose that money towards his own equipment.
Right, it was for his department. That doesn't mean that he was pigeonholed into one thing for his department.
Correct.
It's going back to his department.
Correct.
It's going back to his department. It's fifty, you know, it's fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars that we actually could take back and put it back into free cash.
We could put it back in and repurpose it, but we did agree this time.
Yes, we did.
Just to be clear.
All right, loader is, loader's a loader.
I have issues with this one. I'm not in favor of the cat, I'm in favor of the Volvo for a lot of different reasons.
Can you state why?
It's got a bigger bucket, costs roughly ten thousand less, it's got a better work history with some of the departments at Capital, and I'm not sure if Stanley wants to chime in, but some of the research we've done, it's, it's useful, lifespan has been better. I'm glad that the John Deere's out, I wouldn't recommend that at all. Westside has a cat and has a Volvo, they like the cat a lot, actually, they like the Volvo a lot better. And one of the town's biggest complaints was that turning radius and getting up on Coy Hill now, especially downtown, that thing turns on a dime compared to the, the cat. I mean, there's other things, I know Capital is here, I won't support the cat, I'll support the Volvo at the one forty-two or whatever it was, with taking the fourteen or fifteen thousand. He's, he's stating in the article here for this transmission, it doesn't make a difference. I've asked about that transmission, it's either one. I mean, they're both decent, but at this point in time, for savings of ten thousand, a better warranty, a larger bucket, and a better turning radius, I'd like to see us go with the Volvo. My personal opinion is, I think Tom wants to go with the cat, because it's the ease of the understanding of the equipment, and the Volvo is something new, it's something different, but it has a pretty good history. And I know Capital is here, if they want to chime in, Mr. Chair.
I think it's twenty, I think it's twenty thousand less, and it's got a higher trade-in value, too. It's offering a higher trade-in value on the John Deere.
Correct, we are getting more money than what we have, too. So, financially, it's a much better, uh, district town, and personally, speaking for myself, I think it's a piece of equipment we should look at rather than the cat.
By name, this is, spending time is selfish. They have two Volvos, ordered the second one, they're totally impressed. He compared the new Volvo, he has a cat right next to it, bigger engine, bigger tires, the Volvo outperforms that. The Volvo takes a snow blower and outperforms the cat. Tom notified three departments who was shopping around and asked for assistance. What would you buy if you're shopping for a new bucket loader? He specified between two, John Deere and the cat. Three people responded from three towns, two of the towns said Volvo, and they were even asked about Volvo. One, with the deer, nobody recommended the cat. He has that literature on his email.
So, will that be written into the article so that it's specific?
It would have to be, but I'm one of three, so, you know, I can only voice my opinion here, two to three members in the floor have to...
I mean, if the Select Board and the Capital Planning Committee are in agreement with that, finance won't weigh in on what he's buying, because we have no expertise in it.
Capital won't give a...
But if you're going to suggest, both of you, that that's the piece that he needs, then I would recommend that we put that into the article, specifically that he buy that piece of equipment.
Well, you had mentioned once before that, after the last meeting, that it was just basically a motion to buy a loader, there were no specifics in it. You know, that, that will have to be in the motion, model number, year, blah, 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 you know, specifics with a appropriate price, a quote.
So, my understanding is, the article's going to need to read the Volvo, the one forty-two, or whatever the cost was from the quotes that were received, and then the motion will fall, but if you put it in the article, it's in. You need to take out hydrostatic transmission, because that, arrows are down to two, and that shouldn't be in there like that, because now you're, you're, you could never purchase the Volvo, because it doesn't have that transmission. So, I understand why he wrote it that way. Capital voted unanimously to approve the Volvo. I'm the favorite on both boards, Select Board hasn't voted, we haven't voted, we voted for a loader, a new loader, but we didn't vote a specific brand.
Also, he's going to trade in the old one, correct? Should that be in there, too?
Well, it's part, I'm sorry, Mark, but it's part of the, it's part of the quotes that you received, the tiering down, so... Yeah, it's, it's part of the quotes.
Well, I thought some of them didn't, I thought we...
Did the Volvo come with a trade-in value on the Volvo?
Two to three had it, Volvo had it, Volvo had the highest trade-in.
Also, in that Volvo, there's initial five thousand dollars in tires, and that has to be part of the two or three.
Yes.
And the tires on there were ten, I believe.
Correct, right, there was a difference of five thousand for the tires, two to two also.
Okay. Eight, everybody knows what that is, that was money approved last year, that unfortunately, the article would, the wording legally prevented us from granting Tom access to those funds, so that basically the money is sitting there, it just needs to be transferred to an account that he can access.
But how can he get those funds if the original article said ninety-three thousand last year, and it didn't mention, you know, the attachment or whatever it was?
That, that I don't know, I don't have an answer for it. I know that all the funds were, were appropriated, but there was obviously seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents from that article that was voted on, that was not.
If it's part of the total, that's not right.
Mine, isn't this money that's left over from that article, the purchase, so he's transferring it to something else?
His original article that was, the article that was posted in the original warrant is for the ninety-three grand in Newson, Whacko, Whacko, Newson, whatever you want to call it. And he had residual funds left over, he purchased the other thing, because he, if you remember, he did it in his PowerPoint presentation, what he did on the floor was different than...
But the PowerPoint has nothing to do with the article.
Oh, I'm not saying it does, but, but I'm just saying that's how we got there.
It's not right.
So, the money is expended, but it wasn't specific to that, if there is money left over to be put, to buy attachments for that. I think the intent was there. The only thing I can do is I'll check with the council. But we do want to have access to that, that's a piece of equipment, but buying, buying that mower, that is a very integral part of having that piece of equipment in operation. Nine, ten thousand dollars, street lighting, the street lighting maintenance, we had that discussion last Selective Meeting, that we, we are in a contract with people to do the administrative work and the maintenance. Yes, we do own them now, but obviously, along with owning them, we have the responsibility of maintaining them. This is a cost associated with maintaining our street lights and more.
Can I ask, are there any solar ones, because I know a lot of other towns are going solar?
I don't think we have solar.
No, we do. We're all owned. Is it someone maybe can check into how much it costs for solar?
A lot. For us to convert all of those lights.
Well, not all, you would do a gradual transition, possibly.
Well, what we spend per light right now to try and transfer them, after we just purchased them three years ago, is...
Oh, you purchased them three years ago?
We've only had them three years, they had a twenty, they had a twenty-year lifespan.
Yeah.
And it's triple price for a solar option light than it is for just standard electric light, a utility light this up there. We're almost nine hundred a, a fixture as opposed to the two twenty-five we paid.
So, is the maintenance line going to be needed to be bumped up for twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Yes, for FY twenty.
But don't forget, this was our first year of really figuring this out.
And we didn't put much in there, to start, we really didn't know what we're going to need for maintenance when these things come up.
It's still a substantial cost savings at the time.
Oh, God, yeah.
Substantial. Okay, ten, another ten grand to the legal account.
How is, how much money is, how much of the year is that getting you through?
We just got bills in today for another almost six grand, and that brings us through November thirtieth.
So, you're asking for ten thousand now to get you through what?
My understanding, the ten thousand, as I spoke to the accountant, we should, we should make it. Can't guarantee it, but we should make it.
To the end of the year?
Yep.
With the six?
Then why are you putting an article on now, when you can do a transfer at the end of the year?
Well, we're going to need money, I mean, we're only, like Becky said, through November.
Through November.
So, if we have the action or have a special, we should fund it rather than run it into a deficit before we get to May. Could be in a deficit by May.
Well, that's not anything new.
No, but we're having a special to take care of it now, because we know we're probably going to be in a deficit. So, we might as well put some money there now.
So, what's the balance of that account now?
I didn't see, I didn't see Madeline today, like, in the money.
Sixty thousand.
But knowing we need ten thousand at the end of the year, and the light has fifty?
He did fifty, I assume.
Fifty, so we would expend sixty thousand legal, which is, if you look at other communities, not as much as some of our surrounding communities still. They're close to a hundred thousand. Communities our size. But, and it's not just, everyone else, it's not just this office, every office, every department has...
It's Town White, yeah.
It's Town White, it's not like we're calling them all day long, we've got solar questions and other things that have come up, it's all, it all costs money.
Every time you pick up the phone.
Really?
Every time you pick up the phone, ching.
You know, we have, we have issues...
Well, you have to, I mean, you have to, it's just the way the lawyers go.
Nobody here are lawyers, and, and we have issues with, with...
No, I'm agreeing, you need it, yeah.
You know, planning board and Board of Health, that, that have to be addressed, and it is what it is.
Right.
Okay, Adam, three thousand dollars, abandoned solar time, that's just the call volume that has been quadrupled during the year.
I've been mentioning it for several months in the reports and correspondence, but we've hit a unprecedented year, this year, this calendar year. We're roughly fifteen percent above our, above our call volume, and we still have a week to go in this year, so it's, this is... I also have a couple of people that are out on injury, have been out on injury, so they can't... So it's, this is, I also have a couple of people that are out on injury, have been out on injury, so they can't work. These are called, call leave. We have several others that have school commitments and stuff. So it's kinda, it's, this year's really kinda stretched it thin on the overtime, the overtime or something. We have $10,000 to give it for them, but had to call them in a lot more than I was hoping for, so.
So is there anywhere we can transfer this from? Or is it just asking Barry maybe?
It's not really an emergency in which it was unforeseen. It's a line expenditure. I do think we should raise and appropriate it with the intent of you'll have to do some transferring at the end of the year. It should go on the floor as it's, to vote to raise and appropriate.
But if we do that, he can't expend the money until July. So we have to fund it now, so it's gonna have to be free cash. Or transfer, or we borrow, which we're not gonna borrow. So it's most likely free. I just didn't know if there was another line where we had it, we could draw from and transfer it or...
I don't, I wouldn't, in his lines, I wouldn't want to make any decision.
Right, so that's free cash.
Okay, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Ken, you're up.
Twelve, thirteen, or fourteen. What you got?
You got twelve, twenty-four, three for...
Tree warden.
Tree warden expense.
Um, yeah, back in the spring, I was, we went out with FinCon. They said to see them in the fall for possible additional 10,000 in the, in the fall. The fall special didn't happen, it's now. Since that time, we've accrued, I don't know, another two dozen dead trees that are out there from the gypsy moth that's floating around. Add that to the, another few more. I think there's five more that came in that Jimmy brought me through the cemetery and walked through there. And three of those five that can't access with bucket truck. We have to bring a crawler in to get into those, they can't climb them. So it's about seventy-five hundred in the cemetery and another ten, eleven days on the roadside to remove some of those trees and associated police costs. So whatever you can do would be great. If you can't do anything, I just defer them or wait till they fall over and go for rats. Sort of where that is on that side.
Okay.
I've got a pile of trees and I just had a meeting, went to a conference with RID. And they spent their time telling us how bad they are because of Connecticut, Southern Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and how little money they have to help out communities. So I've got them coming in to take two trees down, but I don't, they don't have a lot of extra money to come in and do the extra stuff that I was getting help with. So future discussions with them will come up a way to much more tree removal.
Okay.
So whatever you guys can do would be fantastic. If you can do something there, it's great. If you can't, then...
Okay, Article thirteen is an increase of another 24 grand for our landfill removal vegetation and stabilization banking fund. That's to cover the work that's continued at the landfill.
That's to finish up that last project. We appropriated 100,000 last year, went to bid over the winter, over the summer. Those bids came in at 180 to 220, so that wasn't gonna fly. We revamped the, the bid and changed some of the verbiage and loosened it up a little bit under requirements for types of contractors that can get in there. And the winning bid is about 113,000. Add the engineering onto that, and that brings us to about, just under 130,000. That's why we're asking for 24,000.
But that's mandated and required by the people that see this.
EDP came in in, I think it was November, yeah, when the section chief came in and spoke with us. They've given us the extension of this growing season to get this done. They're hoping it's gonna be done this year. Now they're, now they're hoping that they're gonna get it done, you know, 2019. So they're giving us the extension there or they're hoping it's gonna be done by basically the end of this week. Now they give us extension till December 31st of 2019 to get this wrapped up.
So Ken, how long, when was the bid, when was the bid open for 130,000? How long do you, how long does that price get good for?
Um, I think they're holding that for ninety. We've got three months on that. We need to get through the, we need to get more money.
So when was it open?
It was opened November, be it, be it December. We awarded the contracts two weeks ago. And Roach won the contract, go try to wear it.
So that kinda ruins our options. So it doesn't get funded through free cash. You can't raise and appropriate because we don't spend the money until July. That would be a free cash option for it or not because they need the money within sixty, well, they need to, it's gotta be awarded. It's awarded, but we're gonna send it to funding source.
Yeah, it's a warranted subject to funding.
What's the third article?
Uh, 750 dollar increase, is that a step increase?
That was a step increase that we didn't know was coming this year. At the time that she accrued at Highway, set her up for a step increase this year. We didn't realize that, and she didn't realize that.
So did that be a rat?
I'll have to look at that.
We'll take it however it's to come. This was, she gave it to us, I'm like, unforeseen on our side, so.
I didn't even know she transferred from one department to another.
So yeah, she's due for an increase, but it could be considered a rat since it was unforeseen. I mean, she transferred during the budget season.
Yep.
So I understand that. It could be a rat, in my opinion, because we needed to...
How long was she at the highway at the time?
Years, right back?
Couple?
Couple of years.
Fourteen hours.
So is she making, is this a three-year bumper?
Yeah. So that was three years, they have the step increase still. I mean, they have the annual increase, they're two percent, but she's at the...
Level?
She's what, what are, she's a, no, one now?
She'd be a one.
She's a one.
No, no, I mean, if she, is she considered secretary here?
Yeah.
But she went from one to another.
It was the same classification.
Same classification across the...
Yeah, just different department.
But wouldn't that step have planned for by Highway? Not on the sitting there?
No, because I don't think Tom budgeted it for her either.
So it's totally missed?
No, because he was planning on her leaving because at that point she'd already applied for the job in.
I don't know, we could look at the secretary lines, it could be a transfer, but it could be a rat. And we'll fund it.
Well, if it, a transfer wouldn't help him because it was never set up for her to get her boat. She was, there was no plan for her to stay, so there wouldn't be any money in the line anyway.
Well, this one, it's not gonna affect us until the last three weeks of June.
So what's gonna happen in May?
We can do it May. This has to be shifted up. This is, this is something she's gonna regularly pay until June anyway. So we can do this in May and see what's going on there. You've got to scratch that if you need to, move back. We'll just find out doing it in May.
Okay, 25 grand. Purchase a new server to back up all town offices to ensure the safety of all town public records.
My only question is, is I thought it was, well, originally came to capital, I thought we were around fifteen.
We did increase it a little for any unforeseen issues. When it gets the end to do wiring and so forth, but I gave you an updated, when it was proposed, we made an email. So I couldn't send anybody anything, but I put them all in your boxes. The updated quotes, the cost had gone up. So the original quotes, I don't have them with me, but the both quotes had gone up slightly. And then we didn't allow for any unforeseen, so that the jobs would be completed.
So the 25 grand, Beck is for the server for the town.
For all of us, right? And that would take care of each of the media problem and then the opportunity to build out.
And it also has cloud based. It's also, it's cloud based also for backups to, not only in-house or the server itself, but...
I thought the immediate problem was that she was going to lose her files. That's how we were, how we were approached.
I believe, I mean, Rachel answers, but I believe if it crashes or we, she has a catastrophic problem, she loses...
I'm gonna lose my database.
She's gonna lose her data.
So what we discussed...
The reason why I talked to you was about getting a rat to get internet hooked up so that I can get a backup of my system. So if we do crap, that's not a fix. That's just a one-time get a backup so we can get the server. I have a 20-year-old computer in my system that is running.
I get it, I get it.
It needs to be replaced. It's failing, I can't do backups. It's not tied to the internet, so it's gonna cost a thousand dollars to get it tied to the internet. They'll, they're willing to do a one-time backup download to the internet. But I can't hook up any hardware to it. I can't do manual backups on it. They don't even want me to shut it off because it's so old, they're afraid it's gonna crash. When I talked to tech, he doesn't even know if he gets internet hooked up, if he can do the backup. He's afraid when he, he can switch it, turn it internally, oh, I'm not tech. He doesn't know if it's gonna work. And we won't know until the cables are run. So we don't even know if hooking the internet to it is gonna allow to do that backup. And that's the database on every single property in this entire town. That's how we build, that's how...
Don't you have paper copies too?
Yes.
Okay, so if it crashed, you'd have, you'd have everything you need, correct?
We'd have to spend thousands of dollars to hire people to, it reloads the database off the paper data.
Well, I mean, you've got extra time in the office, just, you know, start them flying off. But my question is to the three Selectmen, what's more important, 25,000 to the town hall or this? But that's a question for every department because that's how you have to look at this, not the opposite. Of, I'm gonna just say I need this and need that. That's the question, what do you think is more important, the, the town hall being fixed up? Or 25,000 for this? Or say another 25,000 for the border health? That's 50,000, you know? Somebody, if somebody would wake up and say, okay, I'm gonna sacrifice, you know?
She has a 20-year-old computer, is, is that price include the 20-year-old computer being upgraded?
That's right, yeah, yeah.
It is, 20,000?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, but why did you jump from 15 to 25? What's the extra 10,000?
I don't know the, what the updated quote was. It went up, so we, and then we allowed for, so we could get the job done.
Yeah, we, I think initially, Rachel, your office was 12,000 for the office itself.
Initially was...
We were looking, we were hoping it's been 15 for the town. That number was, you know, not realistic. It came in higher with, with everything you're gonna need to put this in place and get it done. So let me finish.
So essentially, if there are any extra...
So this 25,000 is better for the town.
Okay, so...
So this is a town project, this is an accessory?
This is a town server that every department will be connected to.
Okay, so basically if you didn't use the 25, it'd get kicked back to the town then? But you're probably gonna use the 25, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Well, you need a backup. Most people have a backup.
We don't.
Yeah, you need a backup.
It's a starting point for us. This will better protect all of us.
Individuals have backups usually.
We're at a very dedicated in order. But this is a much better fix for the town as a whole, for a lot less money than having each department go out
Right, and get a backup.
And have border health buy a server and do their own backup and have me spend 10,000.
Right.
You'll spend 150.
Okay. Sixteen.
I'm not gonna worry about it because it's your job and if you don't...
If it doesn't happen and you crash, we offer it.
Sixteen, $8,000 animal control salary line to the animal control regionalization line. That again is just transferring money to...
Doesn't, she just cleaned up, yeah.
Seventeen is accessories.
Seventeen is, Rachel, you're on up again, $300 for a camera. You don't have that in that expense line, do you have an expense account for it?
Well, we're already about 95% expended on our expense line.
So what's the camera for?
Just take pictures of the properties. We have an old camera that literally takes floppy disks that goes with the server that we have.
No, I get it, but didn't, I thought we bought a camera a few years ago. I thought we had this discussion, you might have been an assessor at the time, Ken. I thought that it came across that we were buying a camera about three or four years ago. That's why I just, this is just, I'm like, I just bought one. So you'd have no camera?
I have no camera, and we are so, I don't think that picture that I've input into our database, well over 10 years.
Mine's 20 years old.
My picture on my house is 20 years old too. Yes, it's from when I bought it in 92. Yeah, so our plan is, you know, and I know that there's the chance of borrowing one, I have not yet because we haven't scheduled anything, but we need to get like on schedule. We're like out weekly, going street by street, creating a database, and then over the summer I can start inputting. That's why I really wanted to get it on now because summer's the slowest time for us and we'll be able to get these things uploaded. We did do a test, you don't have to do it through the server. So I can get this hooked up and get it going immediately once I purchase the camera. I mean, the worst case scenario, if we have to, it could wait till the May, but then I'm gonna have to start all my pitching over the summer. And I don't know how quickly I'll get to because then I get into our busy season. I know the short staff, this, this...
Okay, so Theo to sell it. Eighteen, 60,000 from communication salary line and 25 from communication supplemental. That is going towards our portion of regional emergency communication center. I think we've had enough discussion on a dispatch over the course of the last year. It still costs money to have a dispatcher. Nineteen, 10,000 dollars coming upon. Barry, you got something else?
I don't have an article for this.
It says finance.
Well, that does, like...
I put it just fine, and Madeline thought maybe you should do that. If not, we can do it. One doesn't make so much of a difference.
The change in, it's a change in a budget that we, we already approved. So, and it was voted on two years in a row. So how it got to this point, I don't know. But if the parks would like to put that on, or if Madeline would like to put it on, fine. How do we, how do we get your question?
My recommendation would be is it needs to be the Parks Department because it's their transfer. They're requesting it. I know the history to these two lines. I would, we should support this. I think the Parks needs to come in and put it forward and get FinCon to vote on it.
That's what, I, I, she said she would call Sue and, and make sure she wrote the article. I asked her about it. I said, who puts this article out? She said Parks. So...
Why did we go from 11,700 to 10?
Uh, that was a, that was a question Madeline.
I mean, you might wanna just contact Sue and tell her she's gotta write that article. It's a simple article to write.
Well, she did write it. She emailed, she, she talked to Madeline.
Is this her article right here?
She talked to Madeline, yes.
Well, what's it for? Says nothing about, it's just a transfer.
I don't know the backstory to this. There was some mix-up, wasn't there a mix-up area or something?
The transfer was, there was a change in the budget for the, because we separated salary out of expense line. Mr., what was his name?
LeBash.
Mr. LeBash asked us specifically to reverse the money so that it would reflect the way it is in the book that we, that we voted last year. Now I'm being told, no, we really wanted it the other way around. Well, I'm sorry, they signed off on it. So if this is how they want it, fine, but they've gotta write the article.
Correct.
Okay. Twenty, 5,000 dollars to information technolog, technological line. What's that money for?
So what's that money for?
That's just to cover some, we had some incidental costs with Northeast IT just coming in and, you know, when we initially had those problems and we were looking at all of this stuff.
So it's just another overspending that we need to take care of?
Well, I think it's overspending.
I think it's under budgeting.
When we started funding a line for technology, it was not funded. We just, it's almost like the street light maintenance town. We're not putting that money in there to fund that line to better protect the town as a whole. So we put a little in there, but we need more and we need this company to come in and finish doing the work.
But when you didn't have that line in your budget, weren't you taking it out of your expense line?
It was going out of Shepherd.
Yeah, Shepherd. But we, we thought, and through Finance, that we would identify a technology line. So we knew what we were spending, we're not just taking it out of the, the expense line. We're calling it expense, it should have its own line. We need to identify it and fund it appropriately every year.
I agree with you.
We just don't know how much we need to have there annually yet until we get ourselves where we need to be. So I think the initial cost will be a little high to get this town connected and everything going, all these offices connected, and then we'll have some sort of, I think, annual fee that we'll be paying.
So do you wanna transfer that an amount? Because there's no amount here either. Oh, I don't have that in my...
No, there's about five.
What's the amount for that? So do you wanna transfer it or take it out of free cash?
I don't know yet.
I don't know yet. We're having to identify the funding. It'll be probably a day tomorrow. Just kinda getting a sense for the articles we'll wind up putting on, and then we're gonna have to look at the funding sources.
Okay, twenty-one. It's the moratorium on the solars.
It is. Um, you, I see that you have the change wording that we submitted, and thank you. I don't know that there needs to be any discussion unless you have questions.
No, you're gonna have to, you know, there's no money involved, so we don't get into all those questions, so.
No, I, I mean, it's, it's a fix to get it through till May. You know, it's, 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 it's a, a hole, I guess, until we can get bylaws adopted. You know, kudos to Joyce and, and, and the people and the residents and just Meemis and them who've been involved with this and you know, getting the language forwarding planning board and everybody else. Um, so I, I think, you know, Jeff answered the last question you had, and so I think we're good with the, the language now? Correct?
We're good with the language now.
We're good, and, and it would work if we continued in the spring to get something ready for May?
We hope so.
We will.
We do, so, uh, I think that's pretty simple. Sorry.
And it doesn't cost us any money?
Yeah.
Okay, the last one.
Oh.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars. Replace the gym floor at the elementary school.
My opinion would be to put this in raising appropriate because I don't think they're gonna have this project going until summer anyway, so they won't need the funds until July, but, you know, they wanna get this project going, and so then we have to fix the building, the problem that we have there. I just hope that this fixes the problem. I think we've had this discussion, I mean, it's, it's more of a bigger problem underneath down, down below there than just that water barriers and.
You mean rotted floorboards?
I hope. I'm sorry?
You mean rotted floorboards?
No, the, the, the problem is that the, underneath the floor is there an issue. That's, that's my big concern because I see the dollar amount here to replace the gym floor. But I don't see any dollar amount to replace the issue.
Floor tore.
Why we're, why we, why the floor rotted?
You know, we have moisture problems and whether with, as you know, I've heard stories about it was installed wrong, and I heard there was you know, when they put the floor in, all the nail holes went to the moisture, you know, now there's an issue that caused the floor to do what it did.
Well, this, you can build that in before the next thing, right?
No, because they went out to bid, they've had to bid to replace the floor with, either wood floor or, or a rubber, a, a different type.
So you'll replace the floor and not find the cause? And then have to replace it again, which is not.
That's the board's concern.
That's our concern. That's a good question for the school committee.
Well, that's my concern.
That's a good question for the school committee and superintendent.
Yeah.
You know, they voted to have us to put this on to fund this project. Um, but that's up to them to decide. They, they will write the bid specs, they will repair the buildings, and it's our obligation to put this on and see if it's funded. But we really don't have any say as far as how they bid that or, or what the scope of the.
You mean, you can't find the cause of why it rotted and therefore you can, gonna replace the spend another hundred fifty thousand dollars in five years if it goes again?
Information I have from the school committee meetings I've attended is that the vapor barrier underneath the floor itself has been compromised. Blowing moisture up through it.
But what compromised it?
The placement of floor itself. So the vapor barrier itself was installed improperly. Putting in the wood floor over it compromised vapor barrier.
Right.
And now we have a moisture issue attacking the wood floor. So there's been a lot of discussion about, they want to put a new wood floor. The, a lot of conversation now revolves around, can it be man-made materials, such as a rubber or a composite material of some sort? I don't have the latest information where the school committee is on that. But those are the discussions we've been having.
Well, they're gonna have to replace the vapor barrier too then if that's the issue.
Vapor barrier is part of the
Cost.
Cost.
They're using that floor now. Is it usable? How bad is it?
I think it, it's more used for, eh, as an auditorium as opposed to a gymnasium.
So you couldn't like use it for a basketball game or something like that? Is that bad? I haven't even, I've never been in a football in my life or whatever.
I haven't been up there regarding basketball. I, I don't know. I don't think there is a basketball crumble at the elementary school besides a pickup situation.
I have not been up there. It's, anybody in the audience been up there to see.
At our elementary school?
Yeah.
There's a basketball. It was set up.
No, I mean, as far as interiorization goes, it's still.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
I've seen it.
I think it's a matter of having a contract to lock in on a price, no matter what needs to be done, you know?
My question is, everybody keeps talking about the vapor barrier. Vapor barrier is under the concrete, it's not on top. So if somebody's gonna replace the vapor barrier, you gotta jack it around the floors though.
Yeah, so is that in action then? They're gonna actually do that? Are they just gonna like?
You're asking the wrong people. You're gonna have to go see the school committee.
First of all, the building needs perimeter drain to go around the building to suck the water out, okay? That, that's way before the vapor barrier. So you could have water coming in and with a new floor, if the, if the perimeter drain is not, and you gotta have some.
Bad money.
You gotta have a contractor that knows what he's doing, tell you how he's gonna do it.
So are we putting this on because they need to have the money in place to get the quotation?
We're mandated to. They voted. And we have to put it on, right? Uh, they have gone out, I think, to bid already, um, with the anticipation that, you know, once, hopefully votes and sends a test. Or sixty days, sixty days we have to have the whole special town meeting to fund their request.
That's what happens.
That's what happens. It's part of the reasonable agreement.
And they are getting quotes on, you know, wood versus rubber.
Versus fixing a problem where the water vapor is coming in, I hope. And what you're gonna spend in again and waste the money.
Okay, folks.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one more question before we go? Uh, are we anticipating any, uh, articles that are supported by petitioner or?
Still nail hole, huh?
I think some will be out, I mean, maybe.
Okay, so can we go down and, and hold on what's gonna stay on?
Vote what's gonna stay on?
Yep.
And we're gonna have to qualify funding?
All right.
Well, we don't even need to identify.
We're not gonna qualify funding, this is, this is gonna be on that. Want me to go through them?
Go ahead.
All right, so my article will be on the first page. So article one was the ninety-nine thousand for the capital stabilization transfer. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Article two is a hundred thousand for the town hall windows. I would like to hold this, I would recommend to hold this one until May because of everything else right now. That would be my vote. Because I, it's gonna take us tomorrow to qualify funding back, and this is a huge one. Uh, the eighty-four thousand for the animal control? Yes.
Yes.
We have to have that.
Four, yes.
Four is the transfer, yes. The thirty-two hundred for the, um, Adam, the fire department?
Yeah.
Yes. The loader, yes. With the rewrite of the article. Um, no, I'm sorry. The fourteen ninety-three O is the auction money which would go towards, I'm sorry, the auction money should go towards the loader, yes. We'll use that money to put towards the cost of the loader. And then article seven was the, the loader itself, yes.
Yeah, but you're gonna strike hydrostatic transmissions and you have the chance of Volvo.
Correct. We're gonna rewrite it. Correct. Eight, seventy-seven, seven, 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 four, two, O for the, uh, since the transfer, the, the article twenty-seven, that would be the line, that's a, it's a full one.
Is that the last one you have?
Yes, I'm sorry. Nine was ten thousand for the street light, that's for me. Um, ten was the ten thousand for legal expense.
You had a yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Article eleven was the three thousand for the animals overtime, yes.
What's a ten? It's a yes.
It's a yes, Ben.
You gotta say yes.
Nine, ten, eleven are yeses.
Twenty-four, three, uh, tree warding expense. I would be a no on that one if we could wait till May, Ken. So it is, I mean, I just, we're tight right now. I need to hold on to some minutes for May, please. So I'm a no. Guys? No until May.
Any other takers now?
Uh, I was supporting extra money for tree removal last budgeting season, and I couldn't get there, so, I mean, I'm between a rock and a hard place. I think we need to start working on these trees. We've had incidences where the trees have fallen into the roadways, creating a nuisance and potential accident, so.
So you're a yes?
What if we ended up doing it where you eliminated the trees in the cemetery that are obviously not gonna be more of a hazard as opposed to something on the street?
That's about seventy-five hundred bucks.
Cemetery.
Would that work for you?
Seriously, it's about seventy-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, no, the cemetery was, but the roads would be about eighteen?
Well, the, yeah, at eleven hundred bucks a day in the roads, and then the cops, yeah.
Do the roads would be about eighteen.
That's more reasonable.
You know, I don't wanna see anybody hurt, but like, you know, Mr. Nady says.
Oh, no, no, I, 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 we're in the same, we are in the same predicament that every other community is in. That, you know, I just sat with the meeting and listened to all these guys going, one town gets fifty grand, one town's waiting for a hundred. So it's be to take them down, and they come down sometime, so we'll show our kids, so.
Twenty-five for landfill or twenty-five for trees? Which one's more a part?
Well, twenty-five for the landfill sort of has to happen, so yeah, yeah.
So I would vote for that one.
I, I'd game on either. You might, you might, we could play with, with that on the, I'm cool. I, I honestly, if we don't get, but you guys know the answer. I, they ask, they ask me this every year. What happens if we don't give you more money?
Then I do less tree work.
Right, yeah. I mean, it is, I mean, you could basically spend a million dollars, we gave it to you.
You could give me a hundred thousand a year for the next five years, and I still just probably get it done, yeah, so.
So I, I don't have an issue with, with the if, if we can hold off twenty-five thousand, it's twenty-five thousand, so.
Yeah.
If that's something that we, we could end up doing, uh.
In May?
Yep, I, I would.
If we can sit in May and discuss more, that's fine, I, you know?
You know, and even increase it a little bit more at, at that time, but.
All right, so we're gonna hold that one till May, it's two, one?
That's twelve?
Yeah.
That's twelve, yes, May. Thirteen was the twenty-four thousand for the landfill. I'm a yes on this one, 'cause I know this project needs to get done. I'm happy to see that the board of health went out and rebid this and got it a lot less than what we thought it was gonna be.
Yeah.
After speaking with, uh, the, that landfill. So it's twenty-four thousand.
Barry, and to answer this question Barry was asked, this should be the end to the closure of the landfill, is what this should be. And it should be just maintenance for it, here for it.
Some, fourteen was the seven fifty for the secretarial increase, yes?
Yeah.
Uh, fifteen is the twenty-five thousand for the, uh, server for the town.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, eight thousand for animal control salaries, the transfer, that's a, yes?
Yes.
The three hundred dollars for the camera for the assessors.
I don't have an issue with three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be, have to be sold on the floor.
Well, is that gonna have, Rachel, does it have to start between now and annual meeting? Do you do that work in the winter? Or can it wait till the, the phone?
We can take pictures and, at any time. The reason why I wanted to get them going now is because summer time is my slowest time and to get them all input with limited staff that I've got.
So if we're doing it in special.
So I don't have time to do it. So if I wait till May, then they're gonna start going out taking pictures, and I'm gonna lose the summer to get them input. It's just, my chances of getting it done, 'cause it, it needs to be done, that's why. I mean, we're by law, we're supposed to have photographs on all the properties, and we probably have, I don't even know what the percentages, but a lot are missing. A lot of very outdated, uh, properties that are showing as two families clearly looking at them, but if you go around by, it's been converted to a single, and they're just not.
So Rachel, is the hope to start taking pictures prior to May?
We wanna start right away.
So then.
We're already going out doing inspections and we could take pictures of the house.
You want the pictures to be done now so you can do your work, with the pictures all done.
So I can, and then, right, and, 'cause it's a lot to upload.
Yes.
I, I don't have a problem with three hundred dollars.
John?
It was fourteen, I thought that was a whole.
Fourteen's a yes. Uh, so we're gonna end up with, she has a step increase.
Yeah, but I thought you were gonna.
Yeah, but I thought you were gonna hold it till May.
Yeah, that's what you said.
No, it may not, yes.
But it's a.
Probably does, but, so we voted to pay it now. I mean, so we can hold it till May, guys, if you want. But we're gonna have to pay at some point or transfer, but she is gonna be owed money.
Then it's a little, some, it's not much.
So would you like to hold, guys, or would you like to take care of it?
Let's just take it. We spend three hundred thousand dollars like nothing, we oughta give them that.
Yeah.
Free cash. So eighteen is communications, that's transfer, yes. Nineteen is the ten thousand for Cummins Pond, which Parks has to write the article, we're gonna wait to hear from Parks on that one.
So that's a nay?
That's a, that's a nay right now until
Right.
Commissioner will be back to us. And then twenty is the five thousand?
No, it's gonna be a yes, because we can pass over it, it's down the backlist.
Well, they gotta be right and posted.
Right, we may not, we may not put it on. They're gonna be back to us tomorrow, it may not be on. We can pass over on the floor, you can pass over on the floor, with the writing? Or just not put it on?
Well, my point is, is more it needs to be signed and posted.
Right, I said just don't put it on right now. It's their article. I mean, Barry doesn't wanna take it, right?
Someone needs to do their homework.
So it's Parks. So I would say pass on it. Just move on.
I don't get a grade.
Mark and John?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've had no discussion on it, so I'm really hesitant, but if that's the recommendation, I'll pass on it.
So that's nineteen, correct, yes.
Yep.
Twenty, the five thousand for the technology line? I'm a yes on that.
Yes.
Twenty-one is the floor, yes. And then the floor has to be on, yes.
So we're done.
Thanks for coming out. Have a nice one.
You're so fat.
What are your? What are your?
Money, money, money.
Yep. Thanks, though.
These are gonna be posted somewhere, right? It's gonna be posted. Yeah, 'cause I'd like to start it. All right, thanks.
Forty-two, hey, going to the one. Okay, you guys don't think one is this, um, forecast here, I wanna start.
The boys is, sir, mayor. Mr. Chairman, uh, huh? Did we, we're still in session?